They might be able to program.
Testing. Testing, test. Testing. Testing, testing. Separating. Testing. Oh no, hello.
Testing.
Testing, testing.
I'll call this, uh, work session in Greenville City Council to order. And, uh, let the record reflect, it's about 4:02. And two, there are two items to be discussed today outside or in the, in the council are, are goals and strategic planning. So, Summer, would you please come forward?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, um, what you guys, if you remember during the budget process, we line out, um, our council lines out certain goals that you guys would like staff to follow. And then once we go through that budget process, then we, um, have projects that we've identified in our, uh, capital improvements, and then we, uh, make sure that those fit into your goals. Otherwise, we don't put those in the budget. Um, so what I've done is, um, I've, if you'll remember, there's a, there's a slide in our budget book or in our, uh, budget book that lines it, lines that out for you guys. Um, and so these are the eight goals that you guys identified for the 24, 25 year. Um, and you guys have voted on these on June 11th of 2024. Um, so a lot of those are the same of you council members that have been here. Um, we've just continued or maybe restructured those or added. I think in the previous years, we've had six goals. We added those two at the bottom there, um, which included preserve the architecture and green space of current city-owned properties and facilities, uh, while striving for and promoting beautification within the city. And then also, we added, um, completion and implementation of the downtown plan. Um, so those were done June of 2024, and then we, um, took the budget process, um, towards those. And then what I've done here, here's, you've got the goal, uh, one, two, three, on this slide, the department that those goals pertain to, um, the budget that was allocated for each one of those projects, um, what we've expended so far, um, to date, and then what the status of those, um, projects are. So, a lot of those, um, when you're talking about build infrastructure for greater stability, uh, the drainage improvement plan, the valley gutter replacement, that's an ongoing project. We're identifying currently right now, um, the remainder of that to expand, um, throughout the remainder of the year. So that's a pay-as-you-go. So you guys have allocated that, um, to the, um, public works department for the last, I believe, three years to be able to do that. And so we've just been, um, utilizing, uh, this year, we're going to identify specific projects, um, that will be for the drainage and things like that. Um, let's see, the AC replacements are ongoing, uh, with the $50,000 that you guys allocate. We're in good shape. We started that project, well, probably eight or nine years ago, um, where we were replacing, um, we identified all of our older HVAC units. We had some from the 1990s, um, still about five years ago. And so we've probably cleaned out, or I wouldn't say cleaned out, but replaced all of those that were, um, aging out. We were, we wanted to stop the process of, oh, let's wait till it breaks in the middle of July to replace it. So we've identified those. So we're in, in, we're in decent shape there. Obviously, we have some larger units like this building, the PD, um, that cost more than $50,000. Those can run anywhere from quarter of a million to half a million dollars, and we've identified those, um, and replaced those. Uh, let's see, the Bliss Street, um, sewer main replacement, both of those are, um, currently out to, uh, in process of being, construction should start pretty, actually, construction should be started on, uh, both of those. Uh, goal number two, uh, pertains to everything water infrastructure. So just in last year's budget, uh, we had the Washington Street main replacement. Um, you guys can see that one ongoing when you walked into the building off of Wesley Street. So that one's getting close to, um, completion there. Um, isolation valves, uh, we're working on identifying the ones that are, uh, number one priority as well as, and we have a, probably a lot more than $400,000 of work to do. And so we need to prioritize those ones that are broken. So we're working on that right now. Um, and then the water trace, water treatment plant, um, electricity, that's been identified. You guys have already approved that. So that's in process as well. Um, the next, um, goal number three includes anything from auditorium events to Bottle Rocket Bash, the Christmas Light Show, the fly-in that's coming up on Saturday, the bonus program that we utilize in the HR department, um, and then also the IT, uh, computer monitor replacement that is an ongoing, um, process that we use throughout the year to replace those aging, um, monitors, anything like that. So we do all of that. But, um, as you know, the, they're still doing auditorium events, just not in the auditorium. So you know, they're utilizing the civic center, um, the library to still utilize those events. So that's why those events, some of those events are still being expended, if that, uh, makes sense. And then, uh, the Oak Creek Park upgrades, those are upgrades. The trail is complete. The other, uh, remaining are in design. Um, obviously, July 4th hasn't happened yet, so we haven't expended any, uh, we haven't spent, expended all the funds there. We do have to pre-purchase a few items there. And then the fly-in. So that's one, two, and three. And then we move on to four, five, and six. And so those are the totals for each one of those. Um, underneath the number four, uh, preparing for flexible and sustainable growth, um, all of those at the library have been complete. If you've been there, those are all, um, used, being used currently. Um, and I believe he came in under budget on all of his items. Um, the two fire suppression system and the loading door replacement, that's in conjunction with the GMA upgrade that's happening upstairs currently right now. So those will be completed, uh, once that's done. Uh, the piano is being restored currently as we speak. And then the next section, which pertains to public service, um, health and safety, um, all of those items with the exception of two, I believe, which is the fire station remodel. Um, Jeremy is currently working with, um, our facilities team to identify, um, the best route to go with that. So that's basically in planning process. And then the sniper rifle, sniper rifle optics have been ordered, or scopes, I'm sorry, are on order right now currently. So all of those have been complete. And then opportunities at the airport, um, Major's Road is in design. We're currently waiting on environmental for that one. Unfortunately, that's been taking way too long. Um, but we're, we're, we have to deal with certain state agencies that, um, uh, prohibit that from happening in a quick, quick manner. Um, the airport layout with narrative, um, GP, myself, and Ty Hilton have interviews with the consultants with that airport layout in, uh, at the end of May. So we have interviews to select the consultant for that project, which that'll be a grant project. Um, and then the master plan design, that is in design currently right now. And so that's going to be about $2.3 million. So that's currently in design.
Do you know the status of that program? Are they, have they given you an update?
They have not given me a percentage update, so I do not know at what percentage that design is complete. But I will follow up and find out from them. So then we can, we can update the airport committee as well. And then goals number seven and eight, um, with the, uh, parks and recreation, most of that lies in there. Um, let's see, the in-bidding process right now for the installing the trees at all of our park, which is five trees per park for a total of 50. Uh, the RFP for that goes out, went out on 510. For the park restroom remodels, that's for the complete redo, uh, of those restrooms. Uh, contract mowing, that's, that's in process. We completed that contract. Um, that's an ongoing contract. Uh, the street sweeper is, uh, complete. It's on order. Um, ADA access for reservoir four, that is in process. I just got, um, text before I came up here today, and, um, the dock has been installed, um, and is already being used. Um, it looks, it's, it's a lot bigger than we thought it was going to be. So it's, if you get a chance, drive out there and it looks really nice. Um, and then the landscaping, we spent about $14,000 there, and that's complete. That's for all the, um, you know, we, we did the entrance signs with the, the G, and then we landscaped everything and redid everything around that. So that one, that's been completed. And then the downtown plan, we've got downtown solar lighting that we've allocated. Um, we're trying to keep that in conjunction with phase one because we'd hate to spend that funding if within the downtown plan, we tear it up in five years and have to redo everything that we did if that calls for that. So we're trying to work that in conjunction, uh, with the downtown plan. So, um, all the down, on the downtown plan, the, the consultant is taking all the committee's, um, comments and putting that all together. And then the next step is to meet with the downtown, uh, committee and finalize all of that. And then these are some projects that are not currently in this budget year. Those are just the larger projects, um, that were, that are continuing ongoing. Obviously, the radio infrastructure replacement, that project is complete. So that's in place now, being utilized currently. Um, fire admin EOC, um, that is about, it's under construction. If you haven't been out there lately, uh, drive down that road. It's starting to actually take shape now. So you can kind of see where everything's going to go. It looks, it's really exciting. It looks really good. Um, and they don't have a lot of construction items on that road anymore. So you can drive down there. I drove down there the other day. The, uh, rec, rec facility is obviously under construction, um, as well as the GMA technical upgrades. You might hear them while we're in this meeting, that they've been working. Everything's been going well on all of those projects. No delays, no major delays that, um, that we're aware of at this time. The, the next one, two, three, four, five, well, actually, next four, industrial park, the new water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant expansion, and the raw water line replacement. Those are all the big bond project from the water, on the water revenue side. So, um, the industrial park project, that's going to go out to bid in the next couple of weeks. So hopefully, that one will alleviate anything on the industrial side, um, and anything going, um, to, uh, to the north side of town. That'll help with storage, with pressure, all those good things. Uh, new water treatment plant, we just had a meeting, uh, this morning. Robert has a weekly meeting with them. Um, that's in design. That's going well. We're working on pre-purchasing. Same with the wastewater. That's all on schedule, uh, where it should be about now. And then the raw water line replacement, we're getting close to completion on that, which is, um, hopefully, the contractor thinks by the end of May, but I don't know. There's been a lot of rain lately. So it, we're, we're guessing a little bit later, but they're working on the header project. Uh, Robert's giving me updates on those. Uh, we're pretty close to, um, to the project. And then the Cattle Tower rehabilitation, if you've been down, um, Cattle Street, um, you could see that. They're working on that, and that's going real well. So that's kind of the major items there. I didn't put every single thing that we're working on, but that's pretty close to, um, everything, um, that we have going on right now. So that's where we're at right now, as we sit today. Um, so really, what we need from you guys as council is any direction moving forward, whether we need to, um, adjust those goals, keep those goals the same, and continue some of these projects. Obviously, those projects that are in these goals, we'll continue and we'll finish those. Um, these should be able to be, um, completed in the regular course of our budget. But if there's any, you know, anything additional that we need to add, that's just kind of the direction we need from you guys, um, as city council to make sure when we do build the budget. Um, we've already scored all of our CIP. We just don't know, from my standpoint, uh, from GP and I, what goal do we need to put it towards? You know, do we need to knock it down to, because it doesn't fit into any of our goals, um, really. But so staff has already given us those and what they need. Um, so really, I just need the direction that council needs to go that, so that we can tailor that towards, um, the direction that council, um, would like us to go with those goals. So that's really kind of where we're at right now. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I guess what you'd like for us to do is come back and finalize these goals by the, in the next couple of meetings, probably.
That is correct. We would like that, yeah. So then we can start tailoring those, yeah, and fitting those.
First in June.
Yeah. Or sooner. If y'all would like to do it sooner, we'd be happy to do it sooner too. So the sooner the better for us, and then we can, we can start pushing things in the right direction.
Okay. Any discussion now?
Uh, on the rec center, um, please refresh my memory. What are we looking at? Why is it?
Is Brett here? Is Brett out there? There he is. He'll get, he'll give you the most up to date. I can tell you one thing, what I would like it to be, but...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
The completion date for the rec center.
For the rec center, I mean...
Mark, we're not asking you to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, Reese Davis is on track for September, uh, this coming up September, the end of September. And then Sports Park Center is still on track for May 5th, 2026. No, I mean, our staff, we've already outgrown Reese as it is. So half our staff, uh, really a third of our staff will move into Reese when, when it's completed. So the rest will be out of the Sports Park Center.
Sports Park Center, yeah. A year from now?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Be completely out.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
Any other question?
And TJ, is this kind of what you were looking for? Do you want more? Or, because I mean, we have a whole, two pages of projects that we're working on in our budget that don't necessarily, I mean, they're smaller, so I didn't put everything on there. Um, is that kind of what you're looking for?
Can you share that with them?
Oh, yeah. It's in your, yeah, it's in your budget book, but yes. Yes, yeah. But it doesn't have a status next to it, or it just talks about what we budgeted for and all that. So that's why I was asking if you wanted us to do like we did here, the budget, what's it been expended and what's the status on this sheet, then we could certainly do that too. If that's kind of what you're looking for.
He talked about, uh, space for, for the local market to have a public, uh, supply base.
Yes. Is that what you were looking for, though?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And is there somewhere we can see?
There is not currently. I can send it to you. It's in draft form. So we haven't released anything yet. But I can certainly send it to you, uh, as a draft. Because we haven't fin, the, the committee hasn't finalized anything or made a recommendation to council yet. But I can send it to you. And it, and obviously, it says draft on it, so.
Yeah, I was just interested to see where we're at.
Okay.
But where would the direction we're heading on that?
Okay, yeah, I can send that to you. Um, I think I just sent it to you.
You sent it to me earlier.
Yeah, last week, yeah.
This is exciting stuff. Yes. Uh, I did have a question about the radio project. Here it shows the budget was 9.2, and we've expended more than that. And I'm curious how that worked out.
Where's GP? There you go. My budget guy. I think Jeremy's open. We need to talk to it.
Yeah, so what that was, is when we awarded the radio infrastructure replacement, um, project, it included the 10-year maintenance plan, um, and the, the amount of the bond covered the infrastructure. And then I believe it was the first three or four years of that maintenance program. And then we, um, knew all along that we would, uh, fund that remainder different through pay-as-you-go funding once we hit year, um, year four, five, six, seven, eight.
So it's not a budget outage, uh, overage per se. It's just the way that the financing for all that stuff worked out.
Yeah, it's because we issued it in one purchase order that secured the 10-year maintenance and infrastructure. And I think we were talking about that last week, and I believe that 10-year maintenance starts 2026. Yeah, I believe that, that 10 years of maintenance officially starts in 2026.
Okay.
After the two-year warranty period.
And we locked, we locked those prices in.
Right, right. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other question? Hey, you want to go to I and B? Did you plan or?
No, that's all, it's all A and B together, unless y'all want to change, unless y'all want to talk about it now. It's up to you guys. So, because I put where we're at and where we want to go. So that's up to you guys.
One more question? Not. We're going to, uh, executive session, and we'll be back out at 6 o'clock. Not, we're going to executive session and we'll be back out at 6 o'clock.
Okay, I'll call this regular session of the Greenville City Council to order. Let the record reflect, it's about 6:01. Thank you for coming tonight. And I'd like to, all of you, to please stand for the invocation with student pastor Javon Frosto with the Grace Community Church.
Thank you, Mr. Senator. Thank you, sir. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with gratitude for the opportunity to serve this community. We thank you for the gift of leadership and the responsibility you've entrusted to each person in this room. Grant them wisdom as they deliberate and make decisions that affect the lives of our neighbors. Guide us, guide their thoughts with clarity, their words with kindness, and their hearts with compassion. Help them lead with integrity, humility, and a true desire to seek the common good. We pray for unity in this body, strength in our challenges, and peace in our city. May this meeting be productive, respectful, and rooted in justice and fairness. We ask for your blessing on our city, our citizens, and all those who work daily to make this a better place. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. First item on the agenda tonight is to campus the general, canvas, not campus, canvas the general election. And consider action on a resolution canvassing that. I have the election results here. In place one, Richards Hutchins had 159 votes, or 41 percent of the vote. Ramon Rodriguez had 225 votes received, and he was elected by 58.9 percent of the vote. In place two, T.J. Goss was unopposed. And our old, our representative Ralph Hall, I don't know if it was original, he always said there's two ways to run an election. And that's unopposed or scared. And so you've got, you've got, you've got unopposed. So I'm sure Judge remembers him saying that many times. I don't know if it was original, but it applies in this case. So we need to, the council will need to accept a resolution to accept these election results. What is the pleasure of the council regarding this issue?
Make a motion to accept the results.
Okay. Sir, second.
Second.
Please vote. And it passes five to one. Kenneth Freeman is not here tonight. The next item on the agenda is to administer the oath of office to the newly-elected city council members Ramon Rodriguez and TJ Goss by our county judge, Judge Stovall. Thank you for being here tonight, Judge.
Ramon?
Sir?
Want me to come down there?
Please, sir. You gotta stand down here with me. Congratulations. Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it. Raise your right hand.
Yes.
I, Ramon Rodriguez.
I, Ramon Rodriguez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council member place one.
Of city council member place one.
Of the city of Greenville.
Of the city of Greenville.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Glad to have you here.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
I, TJ Goss.
I, TJ Goss.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council member place two.
Of city council member place two.
Of the city of Greenville.
Of the city of Greenville.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Item 5A, or 5B on the agenda is reception. We planned a reception for Mayor Protem Terry Thomas, who has served the community for many, many years. He was a worthy citizen, and I don't know of anybody in our community that has more of a servant's heart than Terry Thomas. And he's unable to be here tonight for some reasons that we won't talk about, but we will have a reception for him sometime in the future. So I wanted to mention that. And now we have a presentation from our library model, John Hayden.
Thank you. I know, TJ, I figured it out. TJ Goff is the KU athletic director. That's why I get Goss and Goff mixed up.
Okay. I thought maybe you were Jared Goff fan.
No, no. TJ Goff is the athletic director at Kansas. I just want to thank you very much for this opportunity, American City Council. Just want to share with you really great news. The library, thanks to Kristy Melton, she's our youth services librarian. She wrote up application for the FL Young Foundation, and we received $8,000 from them. Very, very great job that she did to be able to get that money. And she also, a lot of the visitors, the representative from FL Foundation came and visited the library and then to also present her the check just recently. And they also, they shared that they came and looked at it, and they found the library to be beautiful, but at the same time, they believe that the children's area could benefit from some updates and some spruce up, just spruce it up a little bit. And so that $8,000, that funding will be designated to purchase some new furniture with educational play materials to enhance the children's area of the library. It's important. We do have a family place library, and this week we've been having a play and learn workshop. We've had about eight families at that play and learn workshop. They just learn how to play with mom and their kids and learn a lot of things. We have also professionals from the city like Wick and like Nutritious, them, like those who come, child development come, and they talk to the parents, help the parents through if they have any questions about those type of things in their kids' lives. So the $1,000 will be funds to be purchased like a fun kid-sized seating to create a more welcoming environment for children, new cushions, cushions, and appropriate storage solutions for used during children's programming, interactive table to promote learning and engagement through play. And all these enhancements we're getting will support the library's ongoing efforts to become a certified family place library, which focuses on making libraries more family friendly and early learning centered. And it's really, to me and our staff, it's all about empowering lives. I brought Tabby too. Tabby also works with our youth as well, but it's all about empowering lives. Just want to share that with you all that we received that money. If you have any questions, I just want to share that with you this evening, so. No questions? All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations. Now I'll call your attention to two placeholders in the agenda, citizens to be heard and public testimony. Citizens are to be heard on items that are not already scheduled for public hearing or on the agenda. Public testimony is for items that are on the agenda. There are no public hearings tonight. The public testimony will start with item 8A ordinances. So if you'd like to address the council on any of these issues, please complete a citizen's comment card and present it to the city secretary. Are there citizens tonight?
I do have two, and then I have one for a topic.
One for what?
One for a topic, but two that are going to speak off topic.
Oh, one for the, one, okay.
The first one's going to be Richard Hutchins.
I'd like to start by saying, Richard Hutchins, 10604 Woodland Drive in Greenville. And congratulations to Ramon. You know, I tried, but you won. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Judge.
The other thing is, I've got, I gave Carla enough copies for everybody to have one. I've got some questions. Under the Texas Open Meetings Act, 551.101, the council meeting has to be convened prior to going into any closed sessions. So the session you just had that was closed was not prior to you opening an open session. So anytime you do that, according to this, my reading of it, either the citizens are able to attend it, and therefore it's not closed, or you can't have it. That's just my reading. The attorney can probably tell you more.
We, I will tell you that we do open the meeting with a work session, so.
Well, you're not opening an open meeting, and that has to be an open meeting, like right here, and then go to executive session. So if the public's not invited, then you can't do that. And I'm sure you didn't know that. That's, but I just, we have to do this for my work, have to go to Open Meetings Act and go study on it, and that's where I learned this. And also, according to the Attorney General of Texas Open Meetings Act Handbook, the most current issue, which 2024, I got the question of why is the city attorney going to every meeting? Because having the city attorney there means you are addressing a legal issue that you need a legal opinion from him, but according to the Attorney General, you can't have him there just so that you don't have to keep minutes of what was said. So unless there's a legal issue that he has to give an opinion on every single closed meeting, then he shouldn't even be in there, and they should be, he should be keeping a minutes of it. Number three, in this, like, are there records kept to closed meetings? Which I talked to Carla, because the city attorney is there, you haven't been keeping any, any records of that. Or number four, number four down here. The, a couple of meetings ago, y'all addressed running utilities out to the development at 224 and 118. I didn't hear anything about what that would cost the city, and I would like to know how much it would cost. And then on number five, I'd like to hear that, how much it would cost, and also the expected time to get the investment back that we're putting into it. I've talked to the police, police chief, and he said he's going to have to have two more patrols added to patrol that area, and that's an extra cost. Fire department's a good ways away. Are they going, okay.
Well, I'll let you continue.
Okay. Fire department, I don't know how far away it exactly it is, but it's going to be a ways away. And are they going to want a fire station out there? They're going to need a sewer pumping station for the far as they are. And number six is why is there no minimum standard for the city streets? Before we spend any money on building new streets or vastly improving existing streets, I think that there should be a minimum standard. And I can give you a perfect example of Mitchell between Colorado and Sale is like this, big potholes. And why wasn't that done or repaired before the, like, Roy Warren was done? You know, that money could have been spent there, and a lot of North Greenville is that way. That's not where I live, but I still think that they deserve good streets too. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Sure. Well, Mr. Hutchins would be correct about the, it's improper to go into executive session under 55100, or 101, unless there is a meeting that's open first, but there is. At four o'clock, we open the work session meeting and then go from there into executive.
That was my impression.
So if that didn't happen, that would be improper. He's also correct that there has to be meeting minutes kept, but those are kept. We keep a certified agenda. Those are the things that at the end of executive session that you guys sign. And those are kept for the required amount of time under the Open Meetings Act rules, which I believe is 90 days, in a sealed envelope. Oh, it's two years for those. And the rest, I think of those were questions. Oh, yeah, and then having the attorney in there. I mean, the purpose of going, of 90% of what we talk about in executive session is listed on the agenda under 551.0711 and 2, which is consultation with attorney. And so, at least in my opinion, everything that we do in executive session is legal and appropriate.
And I think I could respond to your items four and five. I think your concerns are valid. I think it's premature before the formation of that development. That is a conceptual development, and I don't think the city has gotten around to pricing anything in regard to that. So that, that's certainly an appropriate note. It's just maybe a year too soon. And I would hope that when the time comes, we would address those concerns.
Can I have one more question?
Sure.
To the city attorney?
Yeah.
You opened the meeting at four o'clock.
Yes.
The work session. And at that point, it's open to the public, correct?
That's right.
And where is it held?
Here.
Here.
Yes. Yes. Not this meeting, but this room.
This room?
Yes, at four o'clock.
So, but you advertised it at six.
No, we did not.
You advertised the open meeting at six.
No. There's two different meetings, one at four and one at six.
I will be here for the next one.
Great.
There's an agenda for the work session that comes out, premature.
I didn't see anything that was addressed to the attorney. I don't know. I'm not an attorney. I don't know. I'm just reading the perception of the public. Perception is you're hiding things.
Well, I don't, I've not heard that from anybody else besides you.
A lot of people I have talked to have the same perception. And I just mean to Walmart, at Brookshire, at everywhere. When I talk to them, it just comes up, they have the perception that you're going in there hiding things. That's the perception. It may not be the truth, but it's the perception. So maybe you need to get ahead of that perception.
Well, I don't, I understand your point, but I don't know that there's anything that we're doing wrong that would change that perception. Because here's the, here's the agenda, it's attached, if you'll get an agenda out there on the table, you'll see there's a work session here.
Correct. Called executive session.
Yeah. It calls out the executive session in that session, in that.
But it doesn't say it's open, where you have the city council regular meeting is called an open meeting. I mean, everybody, okay, you're not addressing it, you're hiding it. And also having it so early with the people's work.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
John Kelso.
We do appreciate your comments. Thank you.
John Kelso, 6005 Horn Drive, Greenville. Thank you for allowing the citizens to speak on non-agenda items, first of all. A couple weeks ago, you-
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Thank you for allowing us to speak on non-agenda items.
That's a common, that's a-
Some don't do it, schools don't do it. I appreciate it. We appreciate that.
Okay.
You just took 15 seconds. We claim my time. I, a couple weeks ago, y'all voted on changing a zone along Monty Stratton from ag to commercial. And I didn't attend the council meeting, but I was at the P and Z meeting where they discussed that. At that time, the question was asked to the administration, is this meet the future land use in the comprehensive plan? And the answer given back was yes, which more accurately probably should have said no. Why do I say that? I've got a picture, a map of the future land use that's in your comprehensive plan that's on the website. And that parcel of land right there shows to be neighborhood retail. So they were partially right. About 25% of that parcel was neighborhood retail rezoned. The other 75% was rezoned as commercial. So let me just also say, in your comprehensive plan, you've got some policies, let me just read one of them, this direct quote, "Do not allow existing single-family residential homes along the edge of neighborhoods to change to commercial uses." Okay? Which you, that's what you did. You put commercial right on the edge of a single-family neighborhood. So another thing in the comprehensive plan that you didn't exactly follow the recommendation of the experts. So what's my point? My point is not to correct anything that may have been done wrong. I mean, you can do whatever you want to do, it's just should you follow the plan or not? My point is, none of you, not one of you should ever, ever ask, does this meet the comprehensive plan for future land use? You should know that going in. You've got it right here. All you got to do is go on the website, print this map out, and you can see it yourself. You don't need to ask. In fact, I don't think you should ever come to a meeting where you're changing the zoning without this map being in your pocket. You should, you should have this that you can look at before you're making a decision on change in zoning. Does it meet, you know, the recommendation of the experts? So that's my point. I do approve you spending my money to plant a flagpole. I support purchasing the flag.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelso. Are there any other citizens? Okay. Oh, okay.
My name's Dennis Carpenter, 3703 Coyote Crossing, Greenville, Texas. I'd like to share with you with one of the many wonderful opportunities and organizations that citizens of Hunt County and in particular Greenville have to be a part of, is, takes place this September, and it's the Citizens Police Academy. And I would like to share with you and everyone listening or watching that it's a great program. We had the pleasure of John Hayden being up here. He's been through it, I've been through it. It's a program where our citizens can go through. It's a 12-week process, and there you will learn everything about the hiring process of our police, the penal code of what they have to study, and it is volumes of what they need to go through. It talks about the communication process of, you know, when you stop someone, and mental health, and how to discern that mental health between that and perhaps inebriated or something of that sort. And it goes through, we, you'll go through- And it goes through, we, you'll go through the court system in terms of family court. You'll visit the courts. They'll talk about family violence. We have a drone program that you'll be introduced to. They have a narcotics investigation that takes place that you'll learn about. You get to spend a day at the shooting range, and you'll shoot everything from handguns to shotguns to an actual machine gun and go through that. There's crime prevention and gangs, and you'll learn about that and whether there's activity of that in the area. There's a canine interdiction process that you'll learn about. There's more and more CSI crime scene investigation is taught. It's a, it's an excellent program. It'll get you more acquainted with our city. It'll get you more acquainted with our police officers and the entire staff of what the police does, even on, on police stops. When to stop someone? What is the presumed reason for it? What can you do? How do you treat people? How do they respond? And go through. And I would like to encourage anybody, any citizens of Hunt County, of Greenville, Texas, to look into contacting Officer James Hamilton at the Greenville Police Department to look into this very, very worthwhile program in September. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Carpenter. Appreciate it. Are there any other? Okay. So I'll just ask, is there any public testimony? Okay. So if, I won't ask on any of these items. So if anyone from the audience would like to speak, just raise your hand if you would, please. But move right into item A, A to A, consideration action on an ordinance, the City Council of Greenville, Texas, establishing classification for the fire department and providing an effective date. You're right. How are you doing?
Good evening. I'm good. How are you, Mayor? Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is really a formality. So Chapter 143 of the Texas Local Government Code says that the city council has to pass an ordinance to approve the classifications and headcounts for our police and fire departments. As you know, when I came on as the HR Director in February, you also designated me as the city civil service director. Upon my review of civil service and where we stood with a lot of our processes, this was one of the items that I found was missing. The ordinance does show that the headcount, again, just a formality, it's just to match what we currently have as far as our classifications and the headcounts in each one of those ranks. And there is no budget allocation that needs to be done for this particular ordinance as it's already written into the current fiscal year budget. Moving forward, you'll be seeing these ordinances in conjunction with the approval process for budget when new headcounts are requested for those departments.
Any questions? Okay. What is the pleasure of the council regarding this item, A to A? Sounds rather routine.
Approve.
Second.
Please vote. Item 8B, consideration action on an ordinance, the City Council of Greenville, Texas, establishing classification of the police department, providing an effective date.
Same background, different department.
I make a motion to approve.
For a second.
Second.
Please vote. And that item passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Item 8C, consideration in action on an ordinance extending the employment agreement with Summers Burlock, City Manager of Greenville, Texas, which is required by charter. And we have revised and extended that agreement. The council is aware of it. Is there, is there anything, City Council, anything, Council, any comments or is there a motion to revise and extend the city manager's agreement?
I think I would like to just offer a comment, Mayor. And this is for everybody, everybody listening, that Summers really does a great job for us. She is an extremely competent professional that is wonderful to work with and quietly behind the scenes gets so much stuff done y'all don't realize. And we are blessed to have her.
Is there any other comment or is there a motion?
Make a motion to extend the employment agreement.
For a second.
Second.
Please vote. And it passes 6-0. Item 9A, resolutions. I want to start this by saying, we have a vacancy on the litigation committee, and because of what is going on, I've taken the action to appoint Ben Collins to the litigation committee. We have a number of other standing committees and ad hoc committees, which we will, which we will assign in the next meeting or so. And if you have a preference about what you'd like to have expertise or preference of what you'd like to serve on, on any of those committees, if you'd let me know, I'll certainly try to make sure that happens. I think we have about four or five ad hoc committees and about six standing committees. And we certainly, if you have, if you have a preference, let me know in the next week or so, and I'll certainly try to fulfill your requirement or your request. So item 9A, consideration action on a resolution electing a mayor pro temp to serve a one-year term on the city council.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we appoint, or that we elect TJ Goss as our mayor pro temp.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And it passes 6-0. Item 9B, congratulations. Consideration action on a resolution authorizing an agreement in the amount of $199,000 with Game Time Cunningham Recreation for the purchase and installation of new playground equipment at Warren Park.
Yes. Mayor, Council, good evening. So what this would do is, Warren Park is our oldest playground we currently have in our inventory. It was installed in 2008. And so what we would utilize is parkland dedication fees for that area and install, contractor would come in, take out the black border, take out the old equipment, bring in new equipment with a concrete border. So last year, we were able to do a trail around that park and some benches and trash receptacles. And then this year, we'll also be coming back later on with solar lights to light that trail as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. I'm curious, actually. Brett, my kids play on this park occasionally. And I'm wondering why, why don't we expand it with the new equipment instead of taking this out? Because-
Expand on top of this equipment?
Ah, top, but in, you know, next to it.
Next to it?
Yeah. I'm, I'm just don't understand what's needing to be replaced here. Why take it out?
Well, I mean, the lifespan of that is typically 15 years, so, of a playground. So we're, we're running right up on, past, a little past 15 years. It's faded. So, and we're having some, experiencing some issues with chains breaking, which we're trying to manage that stuff. And so, you know, typically at 15 years, we'll pull them out, put new ones in. So updated. Now, I'm not opposed to, if that's the pleasure of the council, if you want us to look at adding another playground next to that.
Yeah. I'm not out there all the time, and if you tell me stuff's breaking, I'll take your word for it. I just, you know, we have a good time on that park, and I wonder why it needs to be torn down.
Well, and like I said, we would put it in the same footprint, or we could evaluate, if that's the pleasure of the council, we could evaluate adding additional play structure there, so.
Any other questions? Okay. What is the pleasure of the council regarding this item?
I make a motion authorizing an agreement in the amount of $199,878.99 with Game Time Cunningham Recreation for the purchase installation of new playground equipment at Warren Park.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And item 9B passes 6-0. Item 9C, consideration in action on a resolution authorizing an agreement in the amount of $107,46.50 with Facility Solutions Group lighting for the purchase and installation of sidewalk, trail, and parking lot lighting at JLU Park.
Yeah. Mayor, Council, so earlier, about four or five months ago, we, PD went out there and did a safety assessment at JLU. And so one of the things that came up was lighting, that it's very dark, parking lot has no lights, trails have no lights. And with us coming up on, which one of the initiatives we've been doing for the last two years is lighting all our trails. And so for us, we have the money there, another parkland dedication project, where what we would do is go in and light all the trails with the same solar lights we have at Oak Creek, and then light the parking lot, and then hopefully increase the safety over there, at least in the evening hours at JLU, so.
Okay. Any questions?
Were there any other recommendations during that study?
Yes, sir.
Safety related that-
All safety related. Yeah. So cameras, additional cameras, which we've, we've already addressed. We got those added last week. Fence, fencing around the splash pad. And then there was, I think, some in the restrooms in terms of time lock systems, which we have bids out on those bathroom renovations currently. So we should get those back on the 10th.
So each of those items are being addressed?
Yes, sir.
Because I want to make sure this is, there's any safety issue.
Sure. Yeah. The fencing would be something we would have to come back. What we're trying to do is evaluate how, exactly how that works. You know, currently, if you're fenced in and somebody's in there, you're kind of in with them. Whereas without the fence, you're able to kind of move around. And so we're, we're just kind of evaluating some different options on fencing, what style of fence, what type of fence, how many entry points, how many exits, that type of thing. So.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
There's one real small issue with that. In your packet, you may have seen there's three little blue words in the middle of the contract that say terms and conditions. You go to that, there's a, one of the terms and conditions that you'd be adopting, if you just adopted it as written, would be paragraph 16, which is an indemnification clause. But it's not legal for a city government to adopt a contract with that kind of clause. And so I would suggest that in your motion for adoption, that it be subject to the removal of that paragraph 16 from the terms and conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a motion.
Okay.
So I move that we approve the contract contingent upon the removal of paragraph 16 of the terms and conditions referenced in the contract.
I'll second that.
Please vote. And that item passes 6-0. Item 9D, consideration action on a resolution approving a change order for the fire administration and training facility that will provide for the infrastructure needed to deliver natural gas to the site. Good evening, Council Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity tonight. As hopefully you've seen before you, this is, this is to get natural gas to our facility. It's an extension of the current main. It's on Monty Stratton along with a service line that extends up our drive. Not a whole lot to say other than we do have a lot of drive there. You know, it's like 1,800 feet, I believe. 1,800 plus feet. So, so any questions you got? You know, this is something that probably should have, should have came up a long time ago, but honestly, we had a lot of trouble getting ahold of Atmos to get the numbers to do this. And so apparently whoever was in charge of that retired, and we were lost in the fold somewhere. So, but we've got it, we do have it now, and be happy to answer any questions.
Was this an additional expense or was this a-
This is an additional expense, just because we didn't have the price when we started. For what I just said, we really couldn't get ahold of anybody. And so, yeah, it is an additional expense. There's no, no way around that. So, I mean, it's obviously, it's a basic expense. It's not something that, that, you know, something we have to have. But we just didn't have a, we didn't have a price of starting the project for that reason. Well, and it wasn't, it probably wasn't covered in the original bond because you had a shovel-ready location. Yes, sir. No, for sure it wasn't. Yeah. Absolutely.
But this is the, I guess, I'm reading it with the, it's going to be covered by the interest earnings from the original bond?
That is correct. Yep. Any other questions? Okay. What is the pleasure of the council regarding this item?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Please vote. And it passes 6-0. Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. Item 9E, consideration action on a resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement with North Central Texas Emergency Communications District. Summers?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. North Central Texas Communications District contacted me, and they realized they have done, now done an audit. They provide 911 services support for us. They do actually have some microwave equipment that is on one of our towers. They have their own towers in other areas, and this is their service area. We're at the very top right-hand corner for Greenville and for Hunt County. And so what they discovered is that they do have microwave equipment located on one of our towers. It's one of, it's on one of our new towers that was a part of the radio project, but we did not have an interlocal agreement with them. And so they'd like to shore that up and clean that up and have an interlocal agreement with it. Daniel Ray has reviewed the agreement. There's not anything in there that needed to be changed or updated, and so we'd just like to move forward and enter into that agreement with them.
If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
And that item passes 6-0. Item 9F, consideration action on a resolution approving an agreement for non-governmental funding for the Greenville Homeless Task Force.
Yes, Mayor. As you'll remember, prior to the, I guess you would say, the colder months for Texas, which are just a few, in the January, February, we had a request from the Homeless Task Force to support their efforts. They originally started out at a location out in the Floyd area with Hope for You. They were supported there. That location had some infrastructure issues, and so they have moved now to the Wesley United Methodist Church in agreement with the church. And so in moving to that location, they had some items that they, code items that they had to address in building items with the fire, with the fire marshal. So that took some time. It took some effort on their part, going through their process through at the church as well. And so now they've gone through that process. Over the colder months, they were able to meet some of those, they met those code items. They had to readjust what they wanted to do, and so they did that. So this past winter, they were open for 13 nights and provided meals, clothes, showers, and a safe place to sleep. And they had about an average of 22 clients per night and 55 volunteers that helped throughout that process. So what they're asking for your support and council support is a little over $8,000, $8,065 that would come from the non-governmental funding, would provide sleeping mattresses, sheets, blankets, pillowcases, pillows, and storage bins to support that area. And so I took this to the, the city council subcommittee on two separate occasions, and they were in support of this funding, and so they just asked to approve this non-governmental funding that was in the budget under Community Services.
If not, is there a motion regarding this issue, this item?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And that item passes 6-0. Consideration action on a resolution approving a professional services reimbursement payment agreement with WC Realtor Advisors LLC, Wildcatters. Summers?
Can we go back to G?
Yeah. Pardon me?
G. We need G first before H.
Oh, did I miss one? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Consideration action on a resolution authorizing amendment to the original agreement for professional service-
authorizing amendment to the original agreement for professional services with Bartlett West for the design of the new raw water line. Want to come up and talk anyway?
So, Mayor, what this is, if you remember, we came to you probably in December and asked the council to approve the pre-purchase of additional piping that would connect from the current raw water line over to the new south water treatment plant, as well as connect to Reservoir 5 and move the intake from Reservoir 5 in that bottom location there up to a top. So, it was about 87, 87.50 of linear feet of pipe. So, we pre-purchased that. What this is going to do is going to design for both of those. So, it'll design for everything at Reservoir 5, as well as everything going into, just from the current raw water line into the south water treatment plant. And so, this is just the design of that. This will help finish that project. We pre-purchased the pipe. We haven't paid for it yet, because it hasn't, it'll go into production and hopefully be ready by August. Talked with Sean about that. And like you said, we do have Lee with Bartlett and West that will be working on that design work, if you had any technical questions.
Any question? We've been talking about this for some time.
Yes, that's correct. This is a piece of it.
Okay, is there a motion regarding this item? Done. G.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote. And the motion passes. Item passes 6-0. Now, item 8H, 9H, consideration action on a resolution approving a professional services agreement reimbursement payment agreement with WC Realtor Advisors LLC, Wildcatter. Summer?
Yes, Mayor. If you'll recall, Wildcatter, they're in the process of developing approximately 320 acres. And so, what they would like to at least explore along with the city would be to possibly set up a public improvement district, which is similar, and Daniel can get into the legalities of kind of how a TERS improvement district would work. And so, what this agreement is, is no risk to the city. The city would perform the feasibility study along with a consultant. So, we would hire, along with our financial advisors, Stephen and Paul, I've already been in contact with them, and Julie Fort would be reviewing. But this would allow us to see if a public improvement district would be feasible and would be something that the city would like to explore further with the Wildcatter along with the developers. The developer will pay for this expense and everything, and they're obligated to do that. But the city is in no way obligated to set up that pit, or, this agreement does not obligate them to set up that pit or anything like that, just to explore the option.
Or pay for a study?
Correct. Well, they will be paying for a study. We'll be, city will be performing the study. That's correct. And Julie Fort has reviewed this agreement, this public, this agreement as well. So...
I guess there are no comments, so, or questions?
Do the Wildcatters want to say?
I wondered if you did. Would you like to address this?
I can't hear any questions.
I have a question. So, we're going to enter into this feasibility study for this pit. What are you hoping to get out of this?
So, we are intending to form this pit to finance our second phase of Traders Road. So, if the council can recall, we built the first phase of Traders Road, Monty Stratton and Traders Road, and we will reimburse through the tax increment reinvestment zone. Now, when we set up the pit, or, you know, if and when we set up the pit, we'll be able to issue bonds, upfront bonds, that can pay for those public improvements. And then, essentially, the TERS would then offset those bonds over time. So, it's a way to finance those public improvements upfront, without having to wait for the TERS fund to have more money put into it that we can then get reimbursed from. So, it's a bit of a cash flow thing. So, that's why we want to set this pit up to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Is there a motion regarding this item 9H?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
For a second. Please vote. And that item passes 6-0. I'd like to ask the City Secretary to read the consent calendar, please.
City Council meeting minutes from April 22nd, and consideration on an ordinance awarding the bid for real property located at 1403 Hemp Hill Street.
Any questions regarding those issues, those items? If not, is there a motion regarding the consent calendar?
Make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
For a second. Please vote. And the consent calendar passes 6-0. There are no city staff, city council reports. Are there any city council discussion or proposed agenda items?
Yeah, I'd like to just bring up just something. Sitting here listening about the library and all the wonderful things that they do, and all the programs they run, and I'm so grateful for everything that they do. I think in the coming years, we need to start planning for an expansion of that library, provide better service to our citizens, and give John some room for all these programs he's got going.
He has a phenomenal number of programs that go all the time. He's not here to hear that, but...
Yeah, and he did, if you remember in his budget presentation, he had that plan to expand. So, I'm sure he'll revisit that during his budget presentation.
I hope he does.
I'm sure he will. So, I'll let him know for sure.
Okay. Any other, any other items we'd like to discuss in the future? Thank you, Philip, for that. There are no boards and commission minutes, and we're going to, into executive session at this time. We expect there will be some votes coming out of executive session. I'll say it that way. Thank you for being here tonight, and hope to see you next time.